Hi, everyone. Welcome to the April 5th Town Council meeting. I'd like to start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just justice for all.
Great job, kids.
So, first of all, I just want to say that Dale, you may have missed the meeting last week, but Dale Pike was elected Chair, and I'm Vice Chair, but he could not be here tonight. He's on vacation. So, I'm filling in, and he will owe me something. I'm not sure what, when he returns in two weeks. So, we're going to start tonight with a presentation. First, for the dedication for the annual report. So, every year, the town publishes an annual report with lots of great information about the community, and each year, it's dedicated to one or several people who have served our community. So, this year, it's dedicated to three different individuals. The first being Kevin Seer, who was our Police Chief for a number of years. And I'm going to read something, so I have to put my glasses on, because I'm blind otherwise. But I'd like to read what's written in the annual report about Chief Seer. "Kevin is a longtime resident of Newmarket. He is a devoted husband to his wife Ellen and father to his sons Matt and Ben. Kevin began his law enforcement career with the Newmarket Police Department as a part-time officer in February 1977. He later served as a full-time officer with both the Newmarket and Exeter Police Departments. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 1989 and served as the department's District Court Prosecutor for several years. He was later promoted to the ranks of Lieutenant and Captain and interim Chief of Police, before being named Chief of Police in February 2005. Kevin led the department with integrity, thoughtfulness, and with genuine heartfelt care for the well-being of the community. Under his leadership, Newmarket has become one of the safest communities, not only on the Seacoast, but also in the state." So, with that, thank you.
There's a copy of the annual report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was an honor and a pleasure, Sarah.
Did you want to say anything else?
Thank you. It was my honor and a pleasure to serve the residents of the town. The thing I miss the most is the people. I don't miss the budget. But I've been keeping in touch. I'm working part-time. I'm still connected to the law enforcement family, and I'm as busy as I need to be right now. But I miss interacting with all of you and seeing you all. But I'm around, and at some point, I may come back and do something in a little different role down. Thank you.
The second person who the annual report was dedicated to is Jim Hilton, who was a longtime Recreation Director. He's not here tonight, but I'd like to read the statement about Jim. "Jim lives in Durham with his lovely wife Pam. Together, they have 10 children and 19 grandchildren around the country." Yeah, that's a lot of kids. "Jim has over 42 years in the field of recreation and 27 years of service to the town of Newmarket. He came to Newmarket in 1989 and modernized and revitalized the recreation program. Jim was instrumental in refurbishing the Beanie Howcroft Sports Complex in 1994 and Leo Landrosch Complex in 2010. He secured funding for the construction of the community center to house various programs, including Head Start, as well as convert the former ambulance building into the Sunrise/Sunset Center to provide services to Newmarket seniors. Jim Hilton is a model of what a Recreation Director is supposed to be. He cares for all members of the community, from the youngest to the oldest. Jim intends to travel to visit his children and grandchildren," which is, I think, what he's doing now, "fish and work in his garden over the summer, then continue to work to better people's lives by working with nonprofits in the area. And as a community, we extend our sincere gratitude to both Kevin and Jim for their outstanding service to the citizens of Newmarket." So, we wish you a long and well-deserved retirement. And then, lastly, a longtime resident, Chris Shopmeyer, is also honored in this annual report, and I'd like to read a statement about Chris. "Chris was a dedicated member of his community, serving as a member and chairman of the Newmarket Conservation Commission, co-founder of the Newmarket Fishing Derby, and an active participant with the Newmarket School-to-Career Program. Chris was proud of his family. He loved fishing with his son Travis, hunting with his daughter Erin, and sharing his life with his wife Terry. Chris will be remembered for his dedicated service to the town of Newmarket and for the many ways he enriched the lives of those around him." And I think also memorialized with the park, which we're excited to add to the community. So, and here, on his behalf, is his wife Terry.
Well, I just want to say, you know, Chris loved this town. It is a great town, filled with lots of great people and wonderful activities, and we're really excited about the park. So, we will treasure this. This is another nice thing that the town of Newmarket has done. Thank you, everyone. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. So, our next item of business, and then I want to open after, when we're done with this, if anybody wants to make any comments about any of these presentations, please. We have a houseful, which we're, which is nice to see, all these faces. So, whenever we have a new council, a new election, we like to honor our outgoing counselors. And this year, we have two, and both of these, I don't have anything to read this time, but both of these gentlemen served two terms on the council. So, Gary Levy and Phil Nazaro, and Gary couldn't be here tonight, but they both, like I said, served two terms, and both served as Chair and have served our community in many ways. And not just our community, but the council and through their leadership and guidance is really, I know it's helped me as a counselor, and I'm sure it's helped all the other counselors as well. Like I said, Gary isn't here, but Phil, I'd like to present you with this town clock and say, not only have I appreciated your leadership, but also your friendship.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you. All I really wanted was the clock. It's the only reason I ran, so. Am I name-plagued? Oh, man. This is great. No, I just want to say, it feels...
It's not the budget. Come back.
Yeah. I was going to say something. We're talking to the back here. I do just want to thank, like, all the previous counselors, the ones that, like, served for years before me, and the ones that sort of, like, convinced me to run in the first place, that acted really as mentors to me, as well as the ones that I had the opportunity to serve with over the last several years. I want to thank the town employees, who are, I think they get a lot of flak sometimes, like, when we're talking budget and this and that, but are, like, to a person second to none. And I, like, it's just an honor to have the opportunity to serve with them. And just thank the voters of Newmarket for entrusting me to do my best for two terms to serve the community. I might not, we might not always have agreed on every single vote, but I think everyone understands, or I hope everyone understands, that my place was always one of philosophical consistency and really wanted to see the best for the town of Newmarket from where I sit. And I have to thank my wife Lauren, who I have promised I will not run for anything other than Father of the Year for a little bit now. But I would say, don't dedicate a town report to me. But thank you all so, so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to turn this around, in case I'm going to let you do that?
Yep.
So, invite, if there's anyone in the community who wants to say a few words, or even if there are any counselors who want to say anything, this is your opportunity. So, with that, I'll close public comment at 7:09. Thank you very much. Give these guys an opportunity to... That baby needs to go home and go to sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
I finally get to be one of the people that leads.
At 7:09.
Bye.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes, and I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes of the March 1st, 2017 non-public minutes.
Second.
If there's any discussion, if there are any changes that we need to make, we would need to make that a non-public, as this is a non-public, these are non-public minutes. But with that, are there any changes, any discussion? End of vote.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Bowden, second by Counselor Burns. Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Next, I'll accept a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from the March 1st, 2017 meeting.
So, move.
Second.
Burns and, I mean, Thompson and Burns. Any discussion, any changes? Vote.
I think it was on, on page six, second line, or second to the last line, I should say, Plane Board Chairman Boderman said there was a junkyard, but he was deceased and had no longer grandfathered, and I don't know if deceased is the wording for that.
Page six of the minutes, or page six of the...
Of the minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Junkyard is deceased.
Yeah, it should be...
Dissisted.
Dissisted or just...
Which isn't a word either.
Right. We'll get that changed grammatically correct.
You font.
Yeah.
That's it, I guess.
That's it?
Thank you.
End of vote, please.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And next, we have the report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Counselors Cast and Finch and congratulate Counselor Weinstein on her reelection. I have provided the new councils with some orientation materials, and as I've discussed, I'd like to schedule a session with them to review and answer any questions that they may have. We can do it by email and set it up, something, if you want to come in. I'd also encourage them to set up, or we can do it all at once, visits with the various departments, so you can see to also the town facilities, whatever's easier for your schedule, works with the department heads. We've already talked with them, and they're more than happy to have everybody come in, so just wanted to extend that out. The next item is, we received our health insurance rates from the New Hampshire Health Trust, our health insurance provider. Initially, we had a guaranteed maximum rate increase of 10.9%, and we budgeted it as such. I'm pleased to let you know that the rates came in at 4.2% increase over the fiscal year '17. This will provide savings of about $40,000 in the fiscal year '18 budget, so we will see some savings there. The next item is that we have been discussing what they refer to as the MS-4 permit, which is to regulate stormwater throughout the region. It's going to impact basically, geographically, everything west of Manchester, including the cities of Manchester, and about north of, south of Concord, so that, east of Manchester, I'm sorry, east, thank you, and everything south of Concord. I met this week with a consultant, Dean Paschal, who's been working with a coalition of communities, and how we're going to actually be dealing with the permit. One of the things that happened was, I'm not sure if everybody realized, that the permit was supposed to be issued sometime later this year, or the beginning of next year. The EPA surprised communities by publishing it two days prior to the inauguration. It was politically motivated, and no towns were actually notified. It was actually found by a community on accident where they were looking up something else, and they saw that the permit was issued under the MS-4, and they finally got somebody and said, yes, it had been. One of the things that we have to worry about is that we now have to be in compliance with this by June 1st of 2018 or potentially face fines. I talked to Mr. Paschal, the consultant, and I'm going to be submitting a resolution to the council to join in an appeal of the permit. First thing is, we know that we need to protect the stormwater, and we're not doing this to say we don't believe in having runoff, clean runoff, to go into the bays, and that we just don't care about those items. We're doing this because we believe that, I believe that the permit that they issued is actually kind of intrusive. We follow, actually, the Massachusetts model for the permit. They actually just cookie-cutted it, basically, and put it in for New Hampshire, which there's a big difference between the urban environment of Massachusetts and Boston and the more rural area of New Hampshire and what the runoff is. The other item is that we are one of four states in the country that our own State Department of Environmental Services did not write the permit. The federal EPA actually wrote the permit on this one. And first, after discussing with the consultant, I'd recommend that we do appeal, because if we don't submit an appeal with, before the July 1st deadline of this year, even if there's something that is found wrong in the permit, we do not have, we do not get the benefit of changing it because everybody else's permit changed. We have to stick with the permit that we agreed to. It's going to be a coalition of communities. Manchester has already agreed to join, and the cost would be based on percentage of population. They're estimating the appeal cost to be about $300,000. Our population, the cost of the town, would be no more than 8,000, so it's well worth the money. We have that in the stormwater capital reserve fund. I would ask to withdraw from that. And another part of that, that I wasn't aware of, that I was told, that in the permit, there's a, one that's really, I thought was a blatant overreach, was that if we are in, if this permit goes through as is, we cannot increase flow into the stormwater system because of the MS-4 permit. As such, that would be, make any development virtually impossible. So, I just think it's, you know, that's just very difficult for the community. I'm going to have the resolution for the first reading at the April, it came in after the deadline. I didn't find out until Monday. While it's under my authority to sign and join in, I kind of want the council also to sign on, say, yes, they support the appeal, so I'm going to ask for the resolution to be passed and be able to withdraw that on the, at the April 19th meeting, so we can fund that.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Thompson?
Couple of questions slash comments. Attorney Rattigan is involved in this to some extent, although I assume there's a coalition attorney that's spearheading the bulk of this?
Yeah, there's an attorney named Jonathan Hall from Washington, DC. He did a lot of work for the wastewater plant in the communities up here. He already deals with the EPA as almost a specialty that'll be spearheading. And another attorney, and I apologize, it actually slipped my mind, talked to John. He understands that's what we do in those big, special situations, so.
Okay. The permit came in in January without telling anybody, which means that we have a deadline for compliance of a year and a half, July 1st, '18. If that permit had not come through, what was the anticipated original date that the permit would come, did we have one? Did we have a compliance date? Again, with the understanding that we were working towards certain things, but how has that really tightened up what we thought the deadline might be?
Yeah, the estimate was actually that we wouldn't see a permit till the earliest December of this year. So, December 2017, that would have made us have to be in compliance earliest January of '19. So, we'd have another year or so to plan. I just want to let everybody know, we already are working on a number of projects to start addressing stormwater issues, and the engineers are looking at, for example, New Road, we're looking at to change some of the drainage in that area that will help assist that, some drainage in this area as well. But this is going to take, go into larger issues, such as monitoring every storm drain that we have that goes out there, catch basins possibly. I know the city of Portsmouth is looking at possibly having to pay at least half a million dollars, not including what they've already budgeted for capital improvements to deal with stormwater.
Just do the storm drain.
And hire an individual to oversee it. So, I just want to say, the costs are going to be there. But yeah, we were really expecting to almost have another year out to address that.
Before this got hammered out. Okay, and I guess my other bit is a bit of an op-ed, but I do, I do believe that this was politically motivated when this all came out. I do think that as things in Washington are sorted out, shaken out, changed out, whatever it is, I do think that there is an effort to address the EPA and what is acknowledged as a number of issues that are overreaching, that started out well-intended, like much of this, what we're being required to do on the permit and other things where they don't seem to know. So, my other thought is that filing the appeal is a good idea for the reasons that you mentioned, but also, frankly, is buying a little bit of time as this gets sorted out at the EPA level, so that it is not quite as onerous coming down from the EPA itself.
And just to add to that, Governor Sununu has already contacted the new director of the EPA, and my understanding is the new director will be coming up to New Hampshire to meet with him and some of the communities that it's going to impact. I just don't know when yet.
Yeah. So, that's it. Counselor Bowden?
I guess, one, what would be the potential cost? I mean, do we have any idea as far as what the cost would be to be compliant?
We...
And I guess that's number one, and what, how long is the process?
Annually, the costs, as I said, city Portsmouth, they're anticipating just capital improvements of 500,000. If we looked at our populations in comparison, and probably the system that we have, I would probably say about $100,000 plus whatever, what we're already doing, replacing some storm drains and other projects. Annual cost, I don't know yet. We're doing that study now, because we're going to have some engineers try to determine. We don't, the state hasn't come down with a plan on what we need to comply with.
Right.
So, I don't know what the annual cost is. As I said, most communities are actually looking at hiring a full-time individual just to monitor MS-4 situation. I don't know if we would have to hire a full-time individual, but if it takes something off somebody else's plate, we would have to find some staffing changes to deal with that. Again, we begun putting money aside for the capital. We have about 250,000 already in the fund, so to start addressing items. So, we just don't know yet. It just came, we thought we would have another nine months at least to come up with a plan before the permit came out, and we just don't have that.
Counselor Burns?
I just have a question, and you may have said this when you were discussing it in the beginning, but is this, is this only for urbanized areas, or is it a phased type of thing, where it's, certain things go to urbanized areas and then other stipulations go to, like, our area?
No, we all have to actually comply with the MS-4 permit, even if we don't have, communities don't have stormed water drains, for example, and this is just one of the odd things that you actually had to measure, with the number of dog licenses in each community, as well as farm animals, because of the pollution from the runoff of farms and other matters that the animals create. They, also, one of the big things that are hitting the small towns, but we already do it, is that they're going to have to sweep all their streets, which a lot of rural communities don't, after every winter, to get the salt and the sand off the road, because they have to take it and dispose of it differently than they currently do. Basically, now they let it run off, whereas now they'll have to dispose of it. So, they have to, they'll have to buy equipment or rent it to do street sweeping.
Counselor Cast?
So, just to clarify, would the idea be to challenge the entire permit or portions of it, or?
As of right now, it looks like portions, because, as we said, that we understand that there are items that we need to address, but there, and I'll provide the council when I get a final list of the, there are a number of items that are just very onerous, that they want to make sure that are being appealed, and as part of the resolution, you'll have that as backup information. I just don't have a finalized list of that yet from the consultants.
I have a quick question. You mentioned Manchester.
Yes.
And in your report, Dover and Portsmouth?
Yep, are on board.
And the other communities?
Rochester, Somersworth, and I think they're reaching out to some of the smaller ones now.
Okay.
So, they're still trying to pull everyone together. Again, they're, it's coming a lot quicker than we expected. I think they were going to repeal it anyways, but again, we were expecting to do it in December, not this June. And if you want to see some of the other community impacts, if you Google it, I know Seacoast Online, so Portsmouth and Foster's have been, have a number of articles of the other communities have been relating to it, too. The next item on my report is that the Brockham County is switching from a calendar year-based budget to a fiscal year. As you know, working in a community that has a fiscal year budget, there's actually a number of benefits for a government to be on a fiscal year beginning in July. One for the county is that currently, they collect their taxes once a year from cities and towns, which is in December. Therefore, they actually operate the entire year and collect the money at the end of the year. One issue that has come up is that they are going to have to have an 18-month budget to line up the fiscal year. We, town managers across the county met with the county delegation and the finance director of the county and the county commissioners to work on that and what the impact would be if they were to tax the municipality to do the 18-year budget. As of right now, they are not, because it would be a significant increase. They believe they have enough money in their own designated fund balance to offset this change, as well as potentially issuing a tax anticipation note or bonding that difference to get them over the six months. So, it shouldn't have a large impact on us personally for the, our community will now line up every budget that we have together. So, we'll see the county, school, and town at the same time. The next item is that the town attorney and I had a conference call with a member of the Office of the State Attorney Generals and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. As you remember, the state wants us to repay about $43,000 for their project of installing bike lanes on Route 108 from the police station to the New Fields Town Line. We were managing this project for the state, and it was assured that no town funds were going to be paid for this. In addition, the voters approved this project with that stipulation. And in our opinion, that the New Hampshire Department Revenue Administration, that we cannot contribute any funds to this project. I had the conference call almost immediately after I submitted this, so I can, we'll now give you the ending. We did not agree. The Attorney General's Office feels that by the contract that was signed by my predecessor, which we believe did not have authority because of the votes that were taken after, that we're still liable for the $43,000. I said, well, the law is clear that we cannot expend funds without an appropriation, and which you'll hear me say many times, no means no. If a budget, if it's not in the budget, or the voters say, take it out, then I can't do it. John, the attorney, town attorney, agreed completely, and we're just waiting for a response, which we kind of figure out what it will be from the state, but if they want to get clarification by going to court, I have said, please do.
Okay.
There were threats of the cost of the town, but I did inform them that our attorney is on retainer, so we're okay. Just a couple of things on my unwritten report before we get into a PowerPoint presentation. I thought I'd go over on the, that we did with other councils in the past, on town council roles and responsibilities. This is the first meeting after the election from March, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the moderator, the town clerk, and the election workers, as well as the town council, for their work on that election. It was not the easiest one. We're now... Just a couple of things on my unwritten report before we get into a PowerPoint presentation I thought I'd go over on the, that we did with other councils in the past on town council roles and responsibilities. This is the first meeting after the election from March, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the moderator, the town clerk, and the election workers, as well as the town council, for their work on that election. It was not the easiest one. We're now seeing the results of all the decisions of all the communities in the state and things that are going on in Concord, but I just wanted to say thank you to all those people publicly. We had a good turnout compared to actually a lot of the municipalities. One thing I asked at that meeting we had with the county was those who switched the date, what their turnouts were, and some of them had bonds, and it was lower than we had. They were more in the 10 to 18, 20% range. We were over 20. So the turnout was okay. It was difficult, and I want to thank definitely the voters who made sure they got out in the morning or when they could to, to vote that day as well. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the public works director in the public works department, as well as the police and town hall staff and town staff. When we found out that the election was going to go forward, it was all hands on deck. We're going to make sure that it was going to be as safe as possible for everybody to get there. As you all know, election workers were offered rides from DPW or police department to get them home if it was, the blizzard was too bad at the end of the night, because we want to make sure those who had to be there got home safe. And there was no questions, no hesitation on any of the departments to do that. So I just want to commend them as well at this point in time. And so before I get into the presentation, are there any questions on my report?
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I wondered if you could address, as spring is approaching and the comments are still out there, I'm not sure how much you can, can say about the ongoing remedies for the sidewalks?
Sure. The crosswalks, as everyone knows, has been a difficult project since last summer. They were out again today. We did have another sink hole in front of the Big Bean, which while it's getting smaller, it still is there. We also had them fix some bricks in front of the northern part of the Mill area. Originally, today was supposed to be a punchless day. We were going to actually walk the site because, and go over everything. However, due to the blizzards that we've had recently, we've agreed to push that out because we want to get the ground settled. Because when we initially set this up, it was the 70 degrees in January and February weather, and we said, "Oh, we'll probably have a warm winter," so we probably jinxed ourselves. So we are pushing that out for a few more weeks before we're going to do that with the Department of Transportation. We have heard from a number of vendors there, and this is public because there has been at least one suit filed that they were not getting paid. Our attorney is aware of that, and we're, of course, we're mentioned in the case because we are the owners. However-
We're not.
Right. We did receive requests for the last payment. We are processing that payment, for the payment four, we won't call it the last one because there's a final one. Payment four, we're issuing the payment minus any liquidated damages owed to the town at this point. So we're looking, I believe, again, roughly about 60,000 dollars off of the last payment. We'll stay with the town for our damages and stuff that we've had to pay for by additional engineering. I hope to know more as soon as we do that wa- that final walkthrough. And to see where the, they are.
I guess that's what I'd be looking for, is a dollar value against punchless items.
Yes.
I recognize that we have liquidated damages, but if there is, you know, 60,000 in liquidated damages and it costs us 70,000 to get this fixed right, not real impressed. Can we go after the performance bond?
Yes.
My other part of this question is if this contractor is unable to get this straight, we hire someone else to do it? Do we have somebody else on deck that is actually capable of doing this right?
We, we, if anything happens with the contractor not being able to perform their duties, we would go after the performance bond, hire another company to complete it.
And how long do we give them to do that?
We have to go through this next step of the punch list and go through that with DOT.
Okay.
And then we actually have to see where they are as a company. So we, they, I could tell you that the, our, our attorney is now in every meeting that we have.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted to get it out there. I know we all probably get questions about that. That is part of my background, so I, I understand it, but it's not always easy to explain, so.
And as, and as you know, like, there's certain strategies, because it's illegal, like, you can't.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Before you move on to the rest of your presentation, I just also wanted to reiterate your comments about the election. And in particular, I think, for me, our moderator, Chris Hawkins, I think, really had an unbelievable decision to make that morning, or that, or the day before, and did the best that he could based on the information that he was given by the governor, by, you know, all, everyone down the line. So I keep hearing all these reports in the media about elections that may not be honored and bonds, you know, and people who, towns that are left in limbo. So I really appreciate the decision that Chris made that, that morning and, and think, you know, again, that people got out early and, you know, I'm grateful to our DPW and town officials and everyone who pitched in, so that's all I had.
I will second that. When the crew was there, good and early, we were all there and ready to set up by the time the moderator arrived. So I do appreciate people getting up and rolling.
That's all. Thank you.
And now my presentation. You all have a copy of this in front of you. In the past, what I would do is I would do this for any new counselors. Thought it'd be easier, and I think I may not have done the, the whole PowerPoint with the last few, because it was like one new counselor, so we just sat down and maybe reviewed it. So I said it would be a good chance to go over this with everybody. It's called Town Council Orientation, but it's more of what's the role of the town council, the town administrator, and town staff. So the first slide is sort of, is what's the role of town council? The town council serves as a legislative and governing body of the town. Easiest way to put this in corporate world, the residents and the voters are the shareholders, the town council's the board of directors, and the town council hires a town administrator to be the chief administrative officer. One of the things that you're going to see in your time on the council, especially since we're referred to as the town of Newmarket, are select boards. And I want to reiterate this for everyone, town councils are not select boards, and counselors are not select board members. There is a difference. Counselors have some authority of select boards, but under the charter, some of that authority actually goes to the town administrator as well. The town charter says the council has all the powers of city councils except to adopt the budget. State law says the council has all powers of selectmen councils and aldermen, and all actions of the city, of a city, apply to the town council. So Newmarket is actually closer in government to the cities of Dover and Portsmouth than the towns of Exeter and Hampton. We typically compare ourselves and say, "Well, in Exeter, they're doing X, Y, and Z," or "In Hampton, they're doing this." Whereas the way we govern ourselves is closer to the Dover, Portsmouth, Rochester, Somersworth, and Durham in our area, because they're all council-manager forms of government, which we are. We're not a town meeting, open town meeting or town meeting form of government, except for the budget. The next is what's the role of the town council with the town administrator? Under state law, which is under RSA 49 slash D, calling two, the town council appoints a chief administrative officer. When they do so, and under the council-manager form of government in our state law, the town council cannot get involved in the day-to-day operations of the, of the running of the town. That authority is given to the town administrator. The town administrator has all the authority of a town manager under this one. There is a difference as, behind a town manager and a town administrator and the board of selectmen form of government. There isn't a difference in the town council-manager form of government. The law actually says you can call the position whatever you want, however, you must follow the provisions of the town manager's state law. So the town administrator appoints, with the town council approval, all department heads, which you'll have one this evening. The town administrator disciplines all employees, including termination. The town administrator proposes a budget and a capital improvement plan to the town council, and there is an extensive list, which copies actually the state law and the town charter. So in this, to simplify it, the town council makes policy, and the town administrator and the staff carry that, the policies out. More on the role of town council, and this is very important, the town council must act as a body. No one town counselor can influence the acts of a town administrator or other employee, or direct the appointment or termination of an employee, or interfere with the duties of an employee. One way to look at it is that the town council has one employee, and that's the town administrator. The town administrator then supervises all the other employees. So the councils must deal with employees through the town administrator. This is actually one that's in state law, is if this is a violation, it's a forfeiture Again, this goes back to the comparison between town council form and other town forms. If we were in a, a town with selectmen and town meeting, laws such as zoning ordinances or parking ordinances, those kind of items would be put annually on a ballot at the traditional town meeting. In 1991, the town of Newmarket adopted the charter, and as such, the town council must adopt all laws of the town. There is no provision for any other entity to adopt the laws of the town. The only thing that you hear often about petition warrant articles in other communities, the only things that can be petitioned in Newmarket are financial items to raise money. The town council has budgetary control. The municipal budget committee and town meeting only approve the bottom line of the budget. However, during the year, the town council has authority after recommendation from the town administrator to move those funds from one department to another. So the next is the town administrator has financial responsibility. The town administrator must approve all ma- any manifest for payment, and they establishes the purchasing code, which we have currently, that any purchases over 10,000 dollars must come to the town council for approval, with three, three bids, or if it's a state, we use a state bid, that's waived since the state already did that process for us, or if we can recommend a reason why it wouldn't happen. Anything below 10,000 but above 1,000, department heads must come to the town administrator to receive approval. And it's the same, pretty much the same process. If they can prove that it's a single-source bid, then I will approve that if we, I review that. And finally, under the charter, the town administrator actually appoints the town treasurer now. And for those who, the town treasurer is different than the town finance director. Town treasurer is more of a overseer of all of our financial dealings. They make sure the money is invested correctly. They reconcile the books. They make sure, they actually sign each check to make sure where it's going, and it's not, it's going to the right places. And they, trust me, the treasurer does have questions, and I'll get notes saying, "What was this one for? Can we please find out?" And we'll get that information for them before it goes out. Some other things is, one, realize that you're on team. This is important, that you're all here to work together. You may not agree all the time, but you still need to work together and make sure we're moving forward as a, as a town. And you represent the entire communities at all times. Many times you hear that, go to a meeting and, "Oh, I'm not speaking as a counselor," or "I'm not speaking as an official." You can't turn that on or off. You're always the town council once you're in office. Any influence you may have over anybody, even by saying, "Well, I'm turning it off right now," you're influencing somebody just by still saying you're a council, so that doesn't happen. One thing I've always said was, if your neighbor were to get arrested for something, that arrest would be in the back page in the police log, and nothing would ever come of it. If any counselor got arrested, odds are their actions would be on the front page. It's just the way it is now that you're in the public eye as a counselor, and you represent the community of all time. And you're doing this for public service and not to benefit personally, politically, or professionally. You're doing this for the dedication of the town. You want to serve the community, make it better. So if you have any dealings with the community through work, or that you may personally benefit from, you should not participate in those discussions and votes. It just, it, it's the conflict of interest. If you, and odds are, the New Hampshire conflict of interest law is very broad. It doesn't really iron everything out. Rule of thumb should be, if you think it's a conflict of interest, a lot of, the perception is greater than the actual conflict. So keep that in mind when an issue may come up. And again, more relations with each other is, set long and short-term goals and objectives as a team. I issued, I gave the two new counselors the last set of goals that you did with Primex today. They're learning that I'm, I'm going through stuff, saying, "Oh, I found this other document I think you may need," as well as the MRI report today. The next is be good listeners and be good team players. Disagree without being disagreeable. For those who don't know, in my previous life, I was, I was a city counselor in an area around here, and everyone would be amazed that you'd go to a council meeting and have a disagreement, but at the end of the meeting, you put it aside and realize that you have political disagreements, but it doesn't mean you have to be disagreeable with a person. It's sometimes, it's not personal. You just have a disagreement. You get a lot more done if that works. I always remember that in my time. Treat each other and staff with respect despite differences of opinion. And I did want to emphasize that with staff as well. People tend to forget that, that when sitting up here, any comment that is made, whether in jest or being serious, the staff takes it a lot differently than a council would, even I would. I get, even the, in the day-to-day, staff takes it completely different, that there are many times, something is said here in jest, and the next day, I get a call that it's created an issue in the department. So just to think of that when having discussions here at this level. Make decisions after all facts have been presented and discussed, and refrain some snap judgments. You'll hear me say, and I hope you will say, that we do not have all the information. Let's table this till the next meeting, or can we get more information? I, I'd rather have that happen than a, later on down the line, say, "Well, I didn't have all the information." So please let us know that, and we'll make sure we get that for the next one. There's no, there's nothing wrong with table and an item, and the departments know that as well. And realize that all actions of the council as a whole are binding, and no council is going to act alone. If the council votes four to three to approve something, a resolution or an ordinance, we enact that as if it's a unanimous vote, because it passed. We, other counselors shouldn't be out undermining an action of the council. We just see it as a, it passed. It didn't pass by a four-three vote. That is the policy of the council at this time. We enact it as that. And no counselor can act alone. Really, I've never seen it here, but you can't bind the town to do certain things. Sometimes you get, we'll get calls and say, "Well, council so-and-so said to come over and fix this wall, that I've got to bid to fix this wall." I take that back, I did hear that once, it wasn't a council though. And I said, "No, we have processes to bid projects, and that's the way we do that." So just to, to reiterate that, as soon as a council acts as a whole, that's it. The council chair. The council chair is the first among equal. They have no more authority than any other counselors, except, they run the meetings and they assist the council in reaching decisions and moving discussions forward. They meet, they have discussions with me to set the agenda. If there's questions, we ask the chair, should that be placed on the agenda or not? I have never, in my time, not put something that a counselor's requested on the agenda, because you have the right to submit items to the agenda. It's more whether or not a department or another entity is ready to make the presentation, do we put it on there? The chair acts as liaison between the council and the administrator. We'll get into more about why one person or a smaller group should act with everybody than sometimes the council as a whole, and it helps resolves the conflicts between the two groups. And finally, they're the ceremonial head of the town government. They should represent the community at different events that, for community pride. Again, to- Again, council relationship with staff, do not micromanage, that's just a given. Let the town administrator and department head runs the day-to-day operations. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command, that's what we've discussed earlier. Do not undermine the staff. If there's an issue, you've got to come to the town administrator. Let us know, because we can't solve it if we don't know there's an issue. Recognize staff has a difficult time in trying to satisfy a diverse council. That goes back to the, if a policy passes, the council, we're implementing it, that's the policy of the council. You may not agree with it, but one of the toughest things for anybody in my position, I have seven bosses, and I have seven bosses with seven different opinions and goals, so I have to try to focus that and get, get into one goal, set of goals and move the town forward, and make policy recommendations that way. The town administrator works for the council as a whole, as I just said, not a councillor. The town, as I said, I have to adjust to the council as a whole, if something changes, I adjust with the council, not the other way around. I try to, one of the things you'll find out is I'm neutral. Somebody says we don't want to do something, and we don't do it. And one of the big things too is, try to get answers from the town administrator prior to a meeting. We give you packets ahead of time, if you have something that you'd like to get some more information that it's not in there, please, we'll get that information and disperse it to all the councillors before the meeting. What it's usually called, and this is called in every community, is nobody likes to play gotcha, which is, try to find an error and then bring it out in public, and it's not good for the council, it's not good for the staff, it's not good for the town administrator. So if you, if we can get that information ahead of time, we will. That goes to another thing, if a councillor requests information, I provide it to all councillors. No one councillor should have more or less information than anybody else. I treat all seven as the same. So, once in a while, you'll get an email saying councillor Weinstein requested this information, here you go. If it's minimal of nature, like what's the calendar for solid waste or anything like that, we don't, but if it's a more policy-driven thing, we will give it to everybody so they have all, every councillor has the information. Again, councillor, the role of councillor is not to deal with staff, except for basic inquiry or praise. Councillors shouldn't be telling a person working at the rec department, my kid didn't play kickball today, you must make them play tomorrow, because I'm a town councillor. If there is a seriously issue, then you contact the town administrator, and I will look into the matter. But I will always say, if a councillor sees a person doing a good job, please say, great job, it always helps on that situation. All local government matters should be funneled through the town administrator. You may get a complaint in public, you know, you're going to get calls from constituents, call me, and then we'll get the responses, the questions, complaints, concerns, we'll give it to you, so you can respond, or if you want to just have, say, I'll have the town administrator to call you, I will call them. Nine times out of 10, I'm only the middle person as well, because I'm going to have to go to a couple of department heads to get that information myself. So we try, and I try to do it that way, so we get all the information together and get one answer. The town attorney is actually hired by the town council, but the town council rules is that to deal with the town attorney only through the town administrator, or is the council as a whole. If a councillor, if a councillor member has a legal question, ask me and I'll get an opinion, so that way, we'll have one opinion for the entire council, and it's not skewed, or I'll even put the question out there and say, this is what we're going to ask the attorney, and then we'll, I'll have it in writing from the attorney, so we all see the same thing. And avoid giving the town administration staff mixed signals from different councillors. This is more the general stuff for everybody. Council meets the first and third Wednesday of the month, except during the summer, we've been going to a summer schedule, we just meet the first, and I believe, I think it's the last in August, or I have to double check off the top of my head.
Just the first Monday.
Just the first, in those two.
I mean, first Wednesday.
First Wednesday. This is the big one, because I hear this all the time. Agenda closes on Wednesday at noon prior to the meeting. No if, and, or, but. Wendy, my administrative assistant, is the collector. She says, no, it's, if it's 12:05, go see Steve. I usually don't, because there's, now if you, in your packets is a staff report, I have to write things, so I'm making the report, the packets late now. And my philosophy is, if you try to get in at noon for a Wednesday, you probably rushed it, and you might not have all the information. This is, and this is for everybody, everything that we have, because we want to make sure the council has enough time to review the packets. So we do put that on there. We only do it if there's an emergency after the noon deadline. So another thing is, the council should not accept information at the meeting that staff does not have time to review. Sometimes people will come in, and they'll say, well, I have this document that proves X, Y, Z, and we never got a chance to look at it, and the council will say, well, look, this document says it. Well, we're in a position of sitting here, not in our office, not with the much larger file to look up and research what the actual item was. If something like that happens and it's very important, whatever the issue is, we'll say, we'll come back to you at the next meeting, we'll have this information, we'll just, we can discuss it at that time. Packets are available the Friday before. We do it digitally now, I think it's working, I know we were doing the Google Drive, we just switched over. So, hard copies of the agenda are always in your box the same time, noon on Friday, so you can come in and just pick that up. If you prefer a hard copy of the packet, we will run those off as well, and it'll be available on Friday at the same time. Other than that, questions, comments, concerns?
Do you have one more slide? No?
Oh yeah, sorry. I do. This is the question that most people ask when coming, what's the difference between ordinances and resolutions? Ordinances are laws adopted by the town council. Ordinances require two, two readings, a public hearing, and after adoption, it's posted in the newspaper, that it was adopted as a law of the town, and then it goes in as a part of the code of the town. Resolutions are policies or positions adopted by the town council, public hearings are not required. It's usually, nine times out of 10, it's to approve ministerial action, such as purchasing something, or amending a policy, like a personnel policy or an item like that, or, as I said, I wanted, I requested the council to vote on a resolution to adjourn this appeal, because it's a position of the council, I want to see if the council would support that. So those, that's the difference. For every resol, every ordinance you'll get, you get in the year, you'll probably get 15 resolutions. I think we're up to ordinance number three versus resolution number...
Twenty-something.
Twenty-something, so, you'll get a lot of resolutions. They all require two readings, which is the first meeting, we just read it, and explain, just read it out loud and say what it is. There's traditionally no discussion on the first one. It gives the council a time to hear it, do research in between, call myself, talk to other people, see what's going on, and then at the next meeting, have the debate, and then vote. So it also gives a time for the public to know, this is a resolution that's going to be coming up at the next meeting. If you have a comment, come into the next meeting, comments by visitors, and make a comment. So that's what, that's why there's two readings, that's why you don't act on it on the first one. It's so it gives everybody more time to, to review it and to study it.
We have one of each.
You have one of each.
In the first reading tonight.
You do.
Any questions, any comments?
But that second reading can be put to a third or fourth, depending on...
Exactly. If there's a...
Counsel and...
Yeah, especially, one of the things you'll find out with ordinances, there's a lot of amendments, then you've changed the legislative purpose of an ordinance, that should go definitely to a third reading and another public hearing. If you, you know, if you've changed enough of it, I, usually I'll sit here and I'll raise a red flag saying, we need probably send this to another public hearing so the public can comment again, because the intent of the original ordinance has changed. We do have some that are on the table, those do not, are not removed from the table until a councillor removes it from the table. I can't do it, staff can't do it. The only ones, you will see once in a great while, that I will come in and request that the council withdraw a resolution, because I'll find something that either was wrong or it's no longer valid. It doesn't happen that often, but it does happen, so.
Any other comments? Nope.
The next training that you will have, we're setting up, is a write-to-know law session. The town attorney will be in, this is the, all you can and cannot do with communications, and hopefully we'll have it sometime in May, and we're inviting the school board and all other boards in town, so we all get the same information at the same time.
So that'll be separate from our regular meeting?
Yeah, so it'll be a separate night.
Just make sure it doesn't interfere with softball, please.
Okay.
Girl softball.
Is that an individual request code?
No individual request.
It's on behalf of...
So next on the agenda is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Yeah. I have one. The Budget Committee did meet on Monday, it was a pretty quick meeting, but they elected their chair and vice chair, and that's Dan Smith is the chair, and Jeff Rab will be the vice chair. Went over the calendar for the coming year and welcomed the new members, there are two new elected, brand-new elected officials, and then Mickey Burns was also re-elected, so that was it. It was a, it was a quick one. And then old business, which we have none, new business. So we have a number of nominations tonight, and our first is for the Director of Recreation. So I would...
Go ahead.
Do you want to...
Yeah, pursuant to section 4.8 of the town, Newmarket Town Charter, I hereby appoint Amy Gagande as Director of Recreation, and I ask the town council to confirm this appointment and employment agreement.
So I would accept a motion to confirm the town administrator's appointment for Recreation Director?
So moved.
Second?
If I may.
Sure.
It's my privilege to appoint Ms. Gagande as the Recreation Director. She has almost, I'll give it to her, two decades of experience as the Deputy Director of the town of Newmarket Recreation Department. One of the things that I was looking at was, one, the amount of time she spends on events and making sure programming is done correctly, and the business side of the Recreation Department is just top-notch, she does a great job with that. When I, when the previous director retired, Ms. Gagande filled in as the interim director, and one of the things, I realized that it was, it was seamless, there was no difference between day one and day two. I know she mentions in her resume that she was, for a while, she was co-director, and I could see that, that the previous director was working with her to step up as soon as he was done, so I have no reservation in appointing her to that position, I request that you confirm the appointment.
Councillor Thompson.
I'm going to preface this by saying I have no problem with the appointment, but at some point, we had had a discussion when employees retire about accrued vacation and sick time, and maybe going forward, doing a use it or lose it, or within a certain amount of time, so that, let's say, worst case, somebody, you know, for 35 years, never took a day off. And I know it was in the packet, so I don't know what, you know, what you can or want to discuss.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
And how that may, how that could apply here.
One of the things that we've done in the town's policy in the past is that any changes in personnel, such as accrued time or contributions to help, that it's, to new, new hires, as this individual was a, already a hire, it would be a loss of benefits to that individual. We've never done that, would do, any changes, which we are still, we are looking at it, would be for a new hire, a new director, or a new department head.
Thank you, I just wanted that clarification out there for everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to move. I'll just say, I was talking to a mother in town this, this morning, about trying to register her kid for some of the programs for the summer, and she, I was unaware, because I don't have kids, but she said, it's so popular right now, that she had to get on a waiting list because she missed the deadline. There are people coming from, who participate from other towns, it's like, the whole area comes to Newmarket.
It's huge.
I was really impressed, and I gotta, I gotta think that that's gotta be part of what's been going on.
I know what you're gonna...
Hit it.
Newmarket residents have first...
She, she said that, yeah.
We get first, and then it goes.
I just...
I don't have kids either, but I want to tell you, that would set me right off, yeah. Okay.
So, so I was impressed, so.
And was that, were you also...
You got it.
I saw it, it was good as it were.
You saw my face, I'm like, what?
Oh. Councillor Bowden.
I just want to say, as a parent, rec is near and dear to my heart, so I'm involved with various, various things, three kids, it's, life gets busy, and Jim did a great job, I'll certainly miss him, working with Amy, it has been seamless, and I fully support this, and excited to see what she has to bring.
Councillor Burns.
Well, that's where I'll come, I mean, I'll just come. So I think this is a great, a great thing, I think Amy does an unbelievable job at the rec center, and I've worked with her on a committee or two over there, so, and it's just, it, what, the amount of stuff she can get done in a day is unbelievable, so I think this is a great, a great thing for the rec center and for her.
And I, I'll chime in too, because I've worked with Amy, not just, not just in programs for kids, but I think that it's important to, to acknowledge the fact that our rec department serves people of all ages, and so, I mean, I've worked with you through ASAP and through the Newmarket Business Association, and in all these other ways, and the Senior Center, and it's, it's exciting to, to see this nomination, so congratulations. And with that, the Chair of the Vote.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Bowden.
Aye.
Question passes six-zero. Thank you for approving the appointment.
Okay, so the next appointment is for Andrew Walker to the McCallan Dam Study Committee for a term that would expire March 2020. So can I have a motion to appoint Andrew Walker to the McCallan Dam Study Committee?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Thompson, Councillor Thompson?
Steve, would you address the policy for a non-Newmarket resident to be on a town committee, please?
Yes, this is an advisory committee only, he's allowed to serve, it's not setting policy, it's just making recommendations to the council, and the council will ultimately set any policies. If it were a policy-setting or statutory, lee, rec, created committee or board, you must be a resident of not only the town, but also of the United States to serve on it. So this is just an advisory one, and in those situations, you try to get everybody who's got the most information.
Qualified. Can I ask one more, as long as, like, it'll, it'll apply in the future? What about being a registered voter, not just a resident?
Again, same, if you, the law is resident, so...
Whether or not a registered voter or not, so why do we ask that?
It depends on, depends on the committee. Certain ones you have to be a registered voter. It also is a way to raise a red flag to look at other items. If you're not a registered voter, we'll say, well, is there a reason? Yes, I'm not a citizen of the United States, I'm sorry, you can't serve on the committee.
And we do that?
Yeah, so, everything we ask.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Cast?
I just had a question about the application forms and the way that this applicant, and I'll note, some of the others also did it. There's, those two items that are marked with RSA, and I didn't, and I didn't have time to ask this before, so I apologize. Are they, if they're marked as RSA, are they required for the applicant to answer, one way or the other?
Yeah, RSA 66919 is, uh, you have to be a registered voter if, if the committee requires it, and 912...
There's some that didn't answer at all, though.
This one's not circled, yeah?
This one, he didn't have to, 'cause it's only advisory. Uh, they'll look to see which committees it was.
The other one was, um, shoot.
Yeah, there are others.
Yeah.
If it's a library trustee, conservation commissioner, or cemetery trustee, then we must table that nomination until such time as that's filled out.
Yeah, Mahoney?
Okay, that will be tabled then.
Any other questions about Andrew Walker's nomination? Then the vote will be Mr. Administrator.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
The next appointment is for, um, Robert Sheehan to the McAllen Dam Study Committee, with a term that would expire March 2020, um, so I would accept a motion to appoint Robert Sheehan.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
The next appointment is for Andrea Sellers to the Conservation Commission, with a term that would expire March 2020, so I'd accept a motion to appoint Andrea Sellers. So moved.
Second?
Any questions, discussion? And the vote, please.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Moving right along, the next appointment is for Edward Pelzar as a cemetery trustee, with a term that would expire March 2020, so I'd accept a motion to appoint Edward Pelzar.
So moved.
Second?
Any questions, any discussion? And the vote, please.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Beginning of the year.
Uh, the next appointment is for Lisa Zee as a library trustee, with a term that would expire in 2020, so I'd accept a motion to appoint Lisa Zee to the Board of Library Trustees.
So moved.
Second? Any questions? And the vote, please.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Uh, and so many of these are repeat, you know, people who have served for years, so it's, it's great to see that. The next appointment is for, is this the one that we were talking about?
Yeah.
Mary Mahoney?
I'd ask that we hold that over to the next meeting, so we can get that information answered.
Why are some of them marked "received" and others are not? Does that matter, in any way, shape, or form?
Of the stamp?
Yeah.
Could have been one, it could have been scanned and emailed in.
Okay.
Versus if it's hand-delivered, we always stamp any papers that come in.
Gotcha.
Okay. So that, so we'll hold that one over. So, the next, um, appointment is for Robert Dagel as a ZBA member, with a term that would expire in 2020, so I'd accept a motion to appoint Robert Dagel to the zoning board of adjustment.
So moved.
Second?
Any questions? And Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
I got a script. Motion passes six-zero.
And, the last one is, um, for Stephen Minutelli as a ZBA alternate member, with a term that would expire in March 2019. I'm sorry, take, accept a motion to appoint Stephen Minutelli to the zoning board of adjustment.
So moved. Second?
Any questions? And Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
All right.
So, the next, um, item of business is our, our resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And for this first ordinance, which is ordinance number two, 2016, 2017, I'm going to just read that, uh, as title only, 'cause it's very lengthy, so unless anyone has an objection to that. So, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, increasing parking violations and allowing permitted parking in certain lots. There will be a public hearing on this at our next meeting, um, and that's available for anyone to read online.
There's a small typo if it matters. I noticed towards the bottom, uh, it says "went" instead of "sent." Or, by five, by section five. Issued in thirty days after being went, a notice of violation.
Okay, yeah, it's a script, and we'll fix that.
So, the next resolution is Resolution 2016, 2017 dash 28, relating to the Tucker land purchase. Whereas the town is in need of additional water supply to meet its current and future demands, whereas the town has permitted a 275 gallon per minute bedrock well on the Tucker property, whereas the Town of Newmarket Water System update and capital improvement plan that was performed by AECOM recommends the town develop the Tucker well to meet its current and future water demands. Whereas the town has signed a purchase and sales agreement with Sharon Tucker for the sum of $435,000, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does authorize $435,000 be withdrawn from the Water Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of the Tucker property for the development of a new bedrock well, first reading April 5th, 2017. Counselor Thompson?
Just minor scrivners again, Steve, as long as we're at it. First, first line, first sentence, "Additional water supply to meet its current and future demands," it's...
Yep.
No apostrophe, please. Thank you.
The next resolution is Resolution 2016, 2017 dash 29, "Purchase of a Ford Police Cruiser for the Police Department to include costs, costs associated with replacement of emergency lighting and equipment setup." Whereas the Police Department seeks to replace the current 2011 Ford Crown Victoria with 91,000 miles with a new Ford Police Cruiser at the state bid price of $28,765. And whereas, "The department's request includes the replacement of emergency lighting and equipment setup, the cost of lettering the vehicle, and whereas, the Police Vehicle's Capital Reserve Fund currently has a balance of $221,291. Whereas the total cost for the vehicle and related equipment to include lettering is estimated not to exceed $47,082.95. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of funds not to exceed $47,000, $47,082.95 from the Police Vehicle Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new Ford Police Cruiser for the town and to authorize the town administrator to execute any associated agreements, first reading April 5th, 2017." And... The last resolution, Resolution 2016, 2017 dash 30, "Purchase of a Motorola APX 6500 VHF High Power Digital Mobile Radio for the Police Department." Whereas the Police Department seeks to replace the currently obsolete Motorola Astro Police Digital Mobile Radio with a new Motorola APX 6500 High Power Digital Radio at the state bid price of $4,094. And whereas the installation will be completed during the setup of a new Police Cruiser at no additional cost to the town, and whereas the Police Dispatch Radio's Capital Reserve Fund currently has a balance of $157,309. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the withdrawal of funds not to exceed $4,094 from the Police Dispatch Radio's Capital Reserve Fund for the purp, for the purpose of purchasing a new Motorola digital mobile radio from the Capital Reserve Fund and to authorize the town administrator to execute any associated agreements, first reading April 5th, 2017."
Can I do a little scrivener's, just to briefly, you got the "no" already, but also "dispatch radio," no apostrophe, S? It's the dispatch radios, plural?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Was that what your light was on for? Okay, thank you. And lastly, any correspondence or closing comments? And our next, oh, oh, sorry.
Oh, was that on the resolutions and ordinances, or...
This is just general comments, if anything, basically, not, not as regular business.
Okay.
Happy to be here. Looking forward to working with you all.
Any other comments?
There will be an acting town administrator for the next council meeting. He'll be on vacation. The odds are he'll be chief troop, since he has the most items on the agenda for the next meeting. He drew the straw.
And our next meeting is April 19th.
Yes.
At seven o'clock. So, um, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Calamity, if there's no further business, the chair can just state, "As there's no further business." Unless there's further business, the meeting is adjourned, so.
Let's make sure.
So, we're adjourned.
Yes, yes, we're adjourned.
Will be off the TV?
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you, everybody.